Well, it's seven oh one, so we'll go ahead and go through order our regular meeting. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion?
Nothing. Nothing from the.
Same as always.
Seven A. Okay. Joan?
I think.
That's one. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, then can I have a motion to approve the order of items for the regular and consent agendas?
So moved.
And a second?
Okay.
All right. Oh, in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, well, I'm gonna make this very brief and just congratulate all of the, uh, my fellow trustees on being reelected to this board. Let's, let's go team. Another four years.
Let's move forward.
Yes, it's on. So a thank you to the community for, uh, reelecting us and putting their trust and faith, a whole lot of faith.
Sure.
In us and, um, glad to be able to do it with this esteemed group. And I will turn it over to Tara.
Thank you. Well, I'll echo that congratulations. I'm thrilled that you were all reelected and we get to dig in and do more great work for the library over the next four years. Go team, indeed. Well, there have been a lot of people in the library over the last four weeks, our October meeting.
Understatement.
Um, between early voting, the trick or treat event and, and all of our other great events.
Tonight too.
Tonight, yes, there have just been a lot of great things happening. Um, so between, um, in early voting, which started October twenty-sixth and went to November third, nine thousand one hundred and eight people voted here at the library. It was about a thousand people a day. That line just filled right up at the very beginning of the day and it never went down the whole entire day, every, every one of those days. It was about a ninety to sixty to ninety minute wait most times, so I think.
Fifty-two for me.
Okay, fifty-two.
The fourth time.
Yeah. So it was, it, it exceeded all of our expectations. Even the election workers were, uh, taken aback at how many people came out to participate in early voting. But I have to say that, um, all those thousands of people during a really highly contested election, a lot of anxiety, um, just a lot of energy in the air, not a single incident, nothing untoward. Everyone was kind, respectful, polite, did what they needed to do. Um, I thought the overall, it was a really successful process. Now, it wasn't without some pain. I mean, library staff answered the same questions over and over and over again. Um, that was a little bit of a grind. Parking was tricky at times. So, you know, it, it put some strains on our resources a little bit, and we've had a lot of conversations about some ways we might tweak it and change, uh, for the next election. We've got our eye on the twenty twenty-six gubernatorial election. I'm sure that'll be the next big one. Um, and then, of course, in four years at the next presidential election.
Maybe the placid obscenities, um, there were so many that just my eyes.
Yeah.
This library is so beautiful and you're like.
It was, it was a lot, yeah.
It was three hundred.
It became useless.
Yeah.
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 So yeah, overall, I thought it was really great and I'm proud of the library for being that place in the community for early voting. Very proud of all the staff.
Yes.
Incredible.
You know what I was thinking? I, I mentioned I read an article that said that Michigan, in fact, early voting was very popular. And it makes me think that the office of Michigan Secretary of State is very effective and has set up a very effective system for voting in Michigan. And in particular Bloomfield is just extremely well-run, so I think we should be very proud of that fact.
Absolutely.
Our city and our state for how well elections are handled here.
Yeah, you're here.
Yeah.
And then, um, of course, we decided to do our trick or treat with food trucks event during the middle of early voting. Again, we really didn't think that the two would really collide. Early voting ended at four thirty on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I think it was. Um, and then our food truck event started at five thirty, um, trick or treat started at six. There, it was a little tight, it was a little tight, but it happened and it was all good and, I did get one complaint about the parking, but I feel like with six hundred people here for trick or treating, after having a thousand people here for voting that day, um, it went remarkably well and everyone had a great time at that event too.
How many food trucks?
Uh, three food trucks.
Okay.
And then, um, nearly two hundred people turned out for our first chamber music event of the year. So again, that's with the very talented students from the University of Michigan School of, um, Music Theater and Dance. I heard that there were several standing ovations and just a dazzling array of very talented musicians. So that kicked that season off really well. We also held our first history harvest. Uh, this was in, this was Laura Crowley's, um, brainchild. Uh, she is the head of local history, uh, for Adult and Teen Services. Um, and this was held in conjunction with the Bloomfield Historical Society. Basically, it was a call to the community for any documents, um, two-dimensional objects, not three-dimensional objects, that we could, um, take into our archives and hold in our collection to tell the story of Bloomfield Township's history. We, we got about half a dozen items, wasn't like a deluge or anything, but Laura felt for the first time holding an event like this, it was very successful and, um, we're gonna do more of those. So that was really good too. So just a lot of things happening in the last couple of weeks. Um, I just wanna mention, as I, I know I emailed all of you about our, the departure, our Facility Services Department head Hugo Cardenas. Yes, we're all very sad to see Hugo go. Um, he is now working for the City of Royal Oak where he is the building superintendent and he has about a hundred buildings under his.
He'll love that.
Yeah, so one building just wasn't enough. But that position, the vacancy is posted. Catherine and I will be working on that together. I know last time Keith, you helped me, uh, with that process. I feel like I'm in a much better place than I was at that time. I feel really confident about being able to find a, a great replacement for that position, so, stay tuned for that. I hope to have that completed by January of twenty twenty-five. And finally, uh, just a very big thank you to the friends of the library who recently approved uh, another wish list totaling just over forty thousand dollars.
My gosh.
Yeah, so a lot of really wonderful programs are gonna happen with that forty grand. And they had another great sale last week. I think it was like sixty-eight hundred dollars or something that they made. So they just continue to have outstanding success and they are so hardworking and diligent, constantly tweaking their sales and their processes. So we thank them for that gift. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Um, can I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, well, now it is time for our call to the public and, um, we.
I'll cast your eyes this way.
And we have Drew joining us from SOC.
So, uh, in this last month, we had our, um, trick or treat staff giveaway, uh, for any staff member who came in with a costume. Uh, we took a group picture and then one person was drawn by random raffle to win, I think, a fifteen dollar gift card. Uh, Jaya, the youth clerical assistant, won it for her Coraline costume. It's not Ford the costume, but that's what she dressed up as. Uh, we did a couple of cozy cafe days, um, in the staff lounge the week after the election, which turned to prove to be a really good idea for a lot of anxieties.
Yeah.
And, uh, coming up next is the winter marketplace sale that Lyndon and, um, Nicole Gillies and you are coordinating with us slash for us slash for themselves.
And those are.
Uh, those are gonna be December ninth through twentieth. They got two weeks.
It's going to be held in the staff lounge, so if any of you are interested, that's behind a, a lock. So if any of you are interested in attending, let me know, we can sneak you in.
In the past, it's been held in meeting room two and just not a lot of people make their way down there. It's something you have to specifically go to. Whereas staff lounge, we'll all end up in a couple times a day, so hopefully a much better location for, for people's goods to be seen.
That's great. This is, we have some very.
Talented people.
Very, yeah, you know.
Even around this table towards this end.
Certainly, certainly down that way, that's for sure.
Well, talented in her own.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Interpretation.
Um, but we don't have any unfinished business to talk about tonight, but we do have some new business and we're gonna talk about our compensation and classification study, so I'll turn it over to Tara. Take it up.
Thank you. Well, I'm really excited to present this study. This has been really long time, uh, coming. We've been talking about it for a long time. Um, this is a direct result of our strategic plan. This was something that the HR committee had identified very early on that, uh, they thought we should do. Plus, we haven't done one since twenty seventeen and so much has happened and changed in the world since that time that it felt like doing.
We don't say.
To do. I, I just feel like there's so much, um, you know, there's, there's so much we can do for staff. We wanna retain our great staff that we have and continue to attract great staff when vacancies come up. Um, so this study is part of that effort. There is a high cost to turnover and we wanna maintain, uh, the folks that we have. So we've been working with MGT. Um, Rachel is kind of pinch hitting here for Katie Ye, who had, Katie was the consultant that did the lion's share of her work on the study, um, and she had a conflict tonight, so Rachel is um, coming in from Illinois for us tonight to share this study. And it was a really good experience working with MGT. I think we did some really great work together. You know, the township just did a compensation and classification study too, um, and presented it, I think, just a week or so ago. So it's, I don't know, in the water right now apparently. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel, uh, who is going to present this study. You all had it sent to you, um, with the board packet items. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it and we'll have time after Rachel's done to ask, answer any questions you might have. So I'll turn it to you, Rachel.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so nice to meet you all. My name is Rachel Skaggs and I wish every client of mine had like the audio and visual that you guys have. I can hear everyone so clearly. It's so nice that I can see you all. A lot of times I'm presenting and I'm like, I can't hear, I need someone else to repeat it or only one person, you know, in the conference room, so I really appreciate that.
Good, good, we're blessed.
Awesome. Yeah, so I'm gonna share my screen. Um, I have a short presentation that I'll go through. Feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions, but then, like Tara said, we'll have plenty of time for questions at the end. Katie Ye, which is my coworker, was the consultant on this study, but her and I work very closely together and all we do is classification and compensation work. So she brought me up to speed and I'm very comfortable, I think, if we need her for anything, we can always go back to her, but I should be able to answer any of the questions that you have. Just a little bit about me really quick prior to working with MGT. Well, I've been with MGT for five years, doing all classification and compensation work, um, and only for public sector clients. So lots of townships, libraries, water reclamation districts, housing authorities, cities, villages, and so on. So I love what I do and I do it every day, but prior to working with MGT, I spent ten years in local government management, all in Illinois, and most recently as a city manager in Princeton, Illinois. So excited to be talking to you tonight. Here's a little bit of what I'll be going over. I'm gonna talk about the scope of work that was included in the study. And then I'll go over the job evaluation and how we developed the classification plan. I'll talk about the market survey and the proposed compensation plan. I'll touch on our recommendations for implementation of the classification and compensation plan. And then also future administration, which I think is a huge component, 'cause we really want this to be a plan and a system that you can use for many years, and then we'll have plenty of time for questions. So here's what was included in our scope of work and I'll go into a lot of these areas a little further on the coming slides, but we had a study preparation kickoff meeting and project meetings. We determined a group of comparable entities. We actually used some that were used previously and I'll get into that a little bit more. We had an employee kickoff meeting, a market survey that really looks at the external market and analyzing that market data. We conducted the job evaluation and then put together our recommending, recommended classification and compensation plan. You have the draft report and we're making the presentation and then we will finalize everything after that. We always like to start off with, you know, why complete a classification and compensation study? And I think there are two kind of key components, um, to each piece, the classification and compensation and reasons why to do it. So first on the classification side, it really supports the internal structure and career progression and internal pay equity. And as Tara was mentioning, you know, when you look at recruitment and retention, I think that's a huge key component within the classification and compensation plan. And then when you look at the compensation side, it, it really focuses on the external market, where you are in comparison to the external market and making sure that we develop a paid plan that can keep you competitive within that. So for the job evaluation, there were seventeen positions that were evaluated using these nine job factors and this is what establishes that internal equity. So every employee completes what we call a job analysis questionnaire that asks specific questions for each of these nine job factors you see listed. So we look at kind of, and it's important to note, we're looking specifically at the position and not the person in the position. So, you know, what's the minimum level of education required to do the job? What level of work experience is needed to perform the job? What's the level of decision-making and independent judgment? Their level of, uh, policy development, but not only policy development, that also includes interpretation and execution of policies and procedures or recommendations to policy changes. Planning of work, so they're planning their own workload and the work of others. Contact with others, so, um, you know, obviously, and I definitely think working in libraries, there's always a lot of internal and external contact and you already gave some of those examples then when you were talking about all the events you've had and the elections and things like that, so there's a lot of, you know, external contacts with the public that a lot of the staff has to be, um, or will have that communication and contact. We look at work of others or supervision exercise, so how many employees are supervised by the position? Working conditions, so physical demands or hazardous conditions, and then use of technology or specialized equipment. So each position is evaluated using those nine job factors. So we look at the job description, we look at the employees completed JAQ. There's also a spot where supervisors could provide comments or feedback if they have any on that JAQ. We always tell supervisors at the beginning not to make any changes to what their employees have filled out, because we think it's really important to understand how the employee views their position. We take into consideration any supervisor comments and then we conducted a virtual interview with at least one employee in each position, and that virtual interview is so important because it allows us to really understand what the position does. We do these studies all the time, but not one position is the same, right? Every entity, every community is a little different, so it's really important that we understand what the position does and what their, their job duties are. So based on those four things, the job description, the J, the employees' JAQ, the supervisor comments and the virtual interview, each position is then given a job factor analysis score, which creates the classification plan, and that's really what establishes that internal equity, meaning how positions relate to one another within the library. So you'll see, and we can pull it up after the PowerPoint, um, but table one within the draft report shows that classification plan and every position falls within one of those eight pay grades. The next piece is that external market review and analysis, and the first thing, um, with, is always establishing comparable peers. So we looked at comparable libraries and we actually used the libraries that were, um, determined to be comparable in the two thousand seventeen analysis. And those looked at, um, service population, annual revenue, total FTEs and total library square footage for all branches. And I think those criteria are similar, um, and important to use and very comparable to what we would have done if we would have done the analysis ourselves, um, this year. So I think that gave us a good understanding of what, uh, comparable entities or which libraries are most comparable to yours. So you'll see the list here of the ones that were chosen within that analysis and used in this study as well. Also, um, the ones noted with an asterisk, which it looks like there's just three, were the only ones that did not provide a survey response. So overall, really good survey and data collection. So after those comparable entities are established, we send out a salary survey. So we always define each position within the survey, again, going back to kind of no position is the same. We wanna make sure that as other libraries are filling it out, they read that short position description, so maybe they don't have the exact position title, but they have a position that does those functions, they can still give us that salary information. All of the salary data that we receive is reviewed to make sure it's appropriate for the position. And salary ranges are the preferred method to gather salary data. So we ask typically for minimum and maximum salary ranges and then actual salaries. We prefer to look at the range data, 'cause that gives us a better idea of what the market is for the position. Um, we only look at actuals when we don't have enough salary range data. And the reason, um, we don't start with actuals is because a lot of different factors go into that, such as, you know, bonuses or longevity of the employee in the position and so on. So we, we prefer to look at range data and we look at actuals if we need to. All of the salary data that has been gathered is the current market for the position, so, you know, we gathered it over the last couple of months, so it's current as of now for the positions. And then also benefit data was gathered and comparative observations made there. When looking at the propose, or when putting together the proposed compensation plan, we calculated the compensation rates at the seventy-fifth percentile of the salaries of the libraries that were surveyed. And that's also on table one. I will again pull up table one after this PowerPoint, 'cause that really encompasses all of the information into one comprehensive table. When we talk about the seventy-fifth percentile, so we never recommend a plane below the fiftieth. The fiftieth is really kind of the median, the middle of the market. We've seen a lot more over the last few years. A lot of our clients want to be at the sixtieth or seventy-fifth percentile because of difficulties recruiting and retaining employees. So I think it puts you in a better position to make sure that you can avoid some of those issues, um, with recruiting and retaining employees and be really competitive within the market. So when I think about the seventy-fifth percentile, um, you know, you're in that top, that top twenty-five percent of the market. Seventy-five percent of those, uh, libraries are paying less and twenty-five percent are still paying more. So it really gives you a good competitive advantage there. So the pay ranges and pay plans have also been calculated at the seventy-fifth percentile and that's shown on table two. And then again, the compensation plan consists of eight pay grades, one being the lowest and eight being the highest. Grades two to five, and this can get a little confusing, but they have a fifteen percent gradation. And what that means is, um, the difference between grade two to three, three to four and four to five are all fifteen percent difference. And that is just reflective of what we see in the market, because those positions are grouped together in the same pay band. And then grade six and seven have a ten percent gradation, so the difference between those is ten percent. Um, and then grade one has a thirty percent range spread, so for the minimum to the maximum of the range is thirty percent. And then all other grades have a forty percent range spread. And again, that's also reflective of what we see in the market and then we want it to be consistent for each grade. Our recommendations for implementation, um, there's kind of three recommendations that we make. So anyone who's below the minimum of their range should be brought to the minimum as soon as possible. Anyone who's within, um, whose current salary is within the proposed range can be slotted into the new pay plan at their current rate. And then anyone who is above the maximum, so if someone's being paid more than the maximum that we're proposing, we never recommend a pay cut. We simply say they can be held there until the range catches up. And you could also consider lump sum increases to those employees that don't impact their base compensation until the compensation ranges adjust. And then future administration, again, we want this to be something that you can use, uh, you know, for, we always say for at least five years, maybe longer, without having to do a full study. So a couple of things that should be looked at annually, first on the classification side. If you have a position that has changed or taken on additional duties, you might wanna review that position. Re-look at the scoring, make sure it's still in the appropriate grade. So we've provided the tools to do that. We also provide free service for a year after the study is complete to help with anything that comes up as well. But you're able to create, adjust or eliminate classifications as you need to. So also, if you have a new position, you have the tools to score that and know exactly what grade it should be placed in and what that salary range should be. And then on the compensation side, it's important to look at your ranges annually and adjust them if needed. So you can do that a couple of ways. You don't need to do a full survey or a full study. You could simply ask the comparable libraries what their most recent increase was and take an average of that and just adjust your ranges by that. You could look at the CPI, but you wanna make sure that you're adjusting them to stay current with market. And then considering any pay adjustments for employees, um, to move them through the range and if they changed grades or classifications as well. So that is kind of a quick overview. I'm happy to answer any questions now and I can also pull up that table one and walk through that at this time.
Can we go ahead with the table? And then we can do questions after this.
That's okay. Here we go. Okay, so this is table one. Might be a little hard to see, but here are the positions way to the left. Those are, again, the ones that were evaluated through that job evaluation and included in the market survey. So then you see the skill level. So this is really where that job factor analysis comes in, so each position is assigned a skill level based on those nine job factors. And then positions that fall within the same skill level are similar based on their job responsibilities and duties and are grouped together. So you can see how, how positions fell based on their skill level. Their current grade is in there, is also, also the proposed new grade is in there as well. And then you have the seventy-fifth percentile salary survey data. So again, looking at the market data and pulling that in from all the entities that responded for each position. So you can see that data. We also, our philosophy is always positions that score similarly should be compensated similarly. So if their J, job factor analysis score is, you know, in the same category, we would look at that market data collectively for all of those positions. The current salary range is listed there. And then you'll see our proposed salary ranges at the seventy-fifth percentile. They never match the market exactly, because every different entity has different range spreads or, you know, different, yeah, theirs could be twenty percent, some might have fifty percent, so it never matches exactly, but we try to match it as close as we can. And we also look at the difference between each grade, getting to that gradation like I was talking about previously. So you can see, um, grades two through five are in the same band. That's why we established that consistent gradation and same for grade six and seven. And then you'll see some positions where we don't have salary or market survey data and that's okay. Again, we look at, we rely really heavily on that internal structure and how positions scored and then applying our proposed ranges. So for positions where we don't have salary survey data, we would look at the other salary data in that same grade and we'd also look at the difference between each grade, um, and make sure that it's reflective of all of that. But overall, I think there was a really good data set and a lot of good responses, so, um, the proposed ranges are reflective of that. And then also the other thing I'll note, for instance, like grade six here, when you look way over, our proposed range is sixty-three to eighty-eight and that's for both of the positions in grade six. And we have the hourly rate listed as well underneath for some of these grades. Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions or go back over anything at this time.
Do you want me to just read your questions, Shane?
No, I can do it.
Okay.
Uh, Rachel, thank you so much for the presentation and for you and your team's work. It's, um, I have some questions just in the order that they appeared.
Sure.
On, and again, for, for all of us on page eight of this, there's a proposed title change, which I thought was a good idea. What did you guys think?
Oh, oh, wait, on page.
So it's basically taking the.
Get some clerk to.
Oh, I have, uh.
Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my pitch.
I thought that was a great idea.
Yes, good, good.
So who, like, how does this happen? Is this just an internal thing that you address or is there some, or, yeah?
Yeah, it's, it, it's actually a lot of work. It has to be changed in like a bajillion places, but we just, we did it for a couple of their positions not too long ago, so we know what to do.
Okay. Uh, on page nine, where you met, where you referenced the libraries, I see Troy didn't respond, which in my mind is the most comparable. It's a large one, it's right next door. Like, do we have a bad relationship? Like, any thoughts?
We have a good relationship with them. In fact, they're, um, a reciprocal borrowing partner of ours, so I, maybe she was busy that day.
And I will say too, um, you know, if you really want their information and we can get it, we can still add it. It likely won't change the data by adding a data point, but, you know, if they are, if you feel strongly about including their data, we're happy to add it if we can still get it.
Thank you. I'm fine. I mean, this is a lot of data. On, uh, on page twelve, we go through the three compensation plan options. Like, what do we do?
We do the open merit increase, open range merit plan. So we have open ranges and, um, you know, everyone's. So we have open ranges and um, you know, everyone's slotted in there. And what we've done for the last several years is I propose a percentage increase and everybody gets an across-the-board increase. So that's how we've been doing raises.
So it's not tailored? It's, it's a like an increase?
That's correct, yeah.
Um, the, you, you had a recommendation, Rachel, about for employees who are at the top of the range to freeze them. What's your experience for, because those are presumably high-performing employees. When you suggest to people that they're not eligible for raises, how does that typically go?
Yeah, and I didn't look, which I should have. I'm not sure if that applies to any of um, the positions. I can check that later, but a couple of things. So we do have some clients-
At the top of their range, um, at least they were in the old ranges and I haven't dug in to see if they are in this, but.
Okay. Yeah, so you can do it. So that's why we sometimes recommend the bonus, so they're still getting an increase. But typically, when we look at the market and if they're being paid more than what the market is for that position, it really shows regardless of performance, that they're being paid outside of the market. We do have some clients that say, you know, we understand that this is a employee that has been with us a long time. We are still going to give them increases, understanding they're outside of the range. But when the market, or when, you know, that person leaves the position, or when the m- market catches up, we'll make sure they're within the range. So there are options for doing that. Um, it's just important that, you know, if you establish the ranges with minimums and maximums, the idea really is that all employees should be within those at some point. So there's exceptions you can make as long as every position is treated the same, right? We typically wouldn't say if there's three people outside of the range, you'd have to do it the same way for all three of them.
Helpful, thank you very much. Uh, I know the report doesn't mention inflation. Like, how does inflation tie in here?
Yeah, so I think you actually did this study at a great time because so many people over the last couple of years have really adjusted pay significantly. Like if, like, you know, when I used to do these studies three years ago, I think I might have mentioned it. Almost everyone was at the fiftieth percentile. Like, they just wanted to be at market. And now we see so many adjustments to help with retaining employees. And, you know, people are paying more to bring employees in, which is r- raising their costs up. Um, so although we don't look specifically at like what inflation is, the market data that we've collected, I think captures that in some sense because these libraries and entities have been updating their pay ranges and we're putting you at the seventy-fifth percentile, which is above market to make sure they're really competitive um, within the market. So I think, you know, a few things, take that into consideration, although we don't look at it directly.
Or said differently, it's a point in time, so we don't really have to think about inflation. Uh, okay, uh, the bonus recommendation-
I do think-
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, just one more thing. I think it is important though to do that, like outreach annually, just to see, you know, what everyone's increases are. So you're updating those ranges to keep up with that too.
And is that an internal outreach? So we reject?
We do that, we do that every year anyway, yeah.
And then what about the bonus concept? Do we have anything like that?
We don't. Um, no, we don't.
Any comments?
Uh, I would consider it especially for those at the top of the range. Um, when we did this uh, in twenty seventeen, we had wanted to do the incentive pool, like you mentioned, where there's a lump of money that goes to each department and they decide who gets what raise. Um, but we never got to that point. So we'll have to talk about that as a management team and see if that's what we want to do.
Okay. Um, will you pull up that table one again or whoever controls the thing?
Yeah.
My sense in looking at table one was that the IT folks are, are below the range, the, the range. And again, our IT is one of our hardest things to keep current on. We have a lot of turnover, as you can imagine. What do we think about our IT folks?
Yeah, so I know you made that comment. I was, I was looking at that too. It, so our head of IT is in the department head range. So he's compen- that position is compensated at a higher rate. Um, our IT specialists, we have struggled in the past to get positions for that, uh, people to fill that position. We've got some good ones right now, so I think that they're happy with their, their compensation here. Um, I struggle because it's in the same band as librarian. So I feel like if we're a library, we don't want to pay too many positions higher than librarian. So it's kind of a, a, a struggle for me.
I think it's hard because you're also comparing it to maybe your own corporation or my own business. And it, it is different. Um, because I think you bring up a very good point is that librarianship, it should be revered-
Right.
And compensated thusly. Um, I think, uh, because I felt the same way is that, gosh, that seems low if we're competing against a marketplace that's pretty much strictly IT department heads, then I think we are really low.
Yeah, and the bulk of the responsibility really falls on the department head.
Yeah.
Fair point, thank you. Um, on the, I don't know if you guys saw the compared, the, for the comparables on the library director. But what interesting to me was we are the uh, second highest revenue of all these, of all fifteen and the third highest square footage. And then the low, one of the lowest population serviced. That was very interesting to me. And then Rachel, can you, I don't, with apologies, page twenty-nine, I just don't understand. Can you explain this to me?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, this was done in twenty seventeen by um, James Vitrano, who I like so much. He's not with us anymore. But I, so I was trying to understand it myself as I was preparing for this. And I think I understand it. So I can kind of go over that. Um, this is the page you're talking about, the one I have pulled up, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what he did here is the same thing as that previous page where he has, you know, the population. Um, and then he has it where he has weighted it based on your population and then assigned points. Essentially, what he did is he looked at, you know, if, if someone's population is within one and a half times bigger or smaller than Bloomfield Township Public Library, they're going to get four points. If it's two and a half times bigger or smaller, they're going to get three. If it's three and a half times bigger or smaller, and I don't know if I'm using the exact percentages right, but that was the methodology. And so that's what the leveled means. Um, and so each points were assigned based on how similar they were to matching your number um, for each of these, and that's how the top comparables were chosen. So over here, you know, like the, so the highest number would be the most comparable essentially.
Okay, I can't tell you. I get it, but I, but I think I'll say okay.
Wait, so the highest number would be-
The most comparable. So we're saying we'd be most compared to Clinton McCombs?
They're big.
Then you-
They have a big, they have a big rep.
But, yeah, but based on like weighting it against yours and then leveling it, like looking how, how much bigger or smaller. Um, so that's how it was, it was done from my understanding and what I was able to gather. Um,
Okay.
I, I wish I could provide more information, but that was my understanding, yeah.
And then I don't really have a comment on page thirty-one, other than I think this is a sheet we need to keep and talk about when it's time for the year end.
I have not numbered here, so I don't know what thirty-one is.
It's appendix um, C. It's the uh, library director's salary comps.
So it's comps.
Okay.
And I have some comments that I'll make later on that.
Yeah, we usually pass that out anyway when we're doing these.
This page?
Yeah, we had that last year too.
Perfect, thank you. That's, that's, those are all my questions, Rachel. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question?
Wait, I have one more.
I was gonna say, are you sure?
There's, I'm not sure. Page fifty-one is, there's a prob- there's a page on paid paternity leave.
Oh.
Of all the things, what's, what's, what do we think? What is that here?
Uh, I would like to offer that. I would like to offer parental leave.
Yes.
Right now, we just have people use their uh, sick vacation time and uh, coincides with FMLA. So offering parental leave is something that I would like to consider. Bloomfield Township does not have it.
Does, we have maternity leave, but not?
Well, we don't like, it's not really-
It's the same thing. So you use your disability, like, yeah, no, we do that too. Okay.
I'm surprised at how many, how few of the libraries that we surveyed.
Yeah. I think it's becoming more common, but I don't know.
Gosh, I hope so.
I, I would also prefer that language.
Yeah, I do too.
Shane, you had also asked what a library monitor is.
Oh yeah, what is that?
It's a, it's a part-time position. Um, they work, uh, we just have two on our books. They work evenings and weekends. It's a person who is here when there's a very small skeleton scr- crew staff to provide an extra set of eyes and ears and feet on the ground to handle any problems that might come up. Maybe assist with like putting out extra chairs for a meeting or something like that.
So it's not one of the people that sits in the, in the bullpen there to help our customers?
No, the, the folks up at the welcome desk are clerks, soon to be library assistant too.
They all are equipped with rulers.
Thank you.
Yeah. Going once? Anything, any other questions for Rachel?
No, but thank you. You did a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Very thorough.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
I'll be in touch with-
Yeah, happy holidays.
I'll be in touch with you and Katie um, shortly.
Sounds great. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Bye.
When we met with the um, personnel committee and Tara mentioned that change from clerk to libraries, we, we said, Judy and I said right away, that's a great idea.
And I think most libraries have adopted that.
Yeah, that person, that employee will feel elevated.
Yeah.
New title.
So there is no um, motion or acceptance or adoption of this. Uh, it's for your information. There, it's full of recommendations that the, the company has made. Um, the next step will be to work through the budget process and implement um, the changes. We have to implement uh, changes in minimum wage, obviously. So that change is going to go in before the budget process, actually. Um, but we will make those changes with the job titles and we have to provide um, um, not comp time, PTO for all positions. Uh, and we have some other ways we'd like to implement that. Some of our details with that. So as we work through the budget process, I will bring all of those changes to you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for um, setting up this time.
Thank you for your review and your questions.
Yeah, I know that this was, has been on the list for a while.
Yeah, feels good to get it done.
Yes, yes, really great. Um, well, we can move on to the discussion of items removed from the consent agenda and um, Shane, you mentioned seven A.
Yes, thank you. So I, I wasn't at the last meeting. There's a couple of payments on here for the roof. How do we feel about how that went?
Oh, it went great. It went really well. Um, they were very inobtrusive. They just did their work. We didn't even know they were here. Um, I think there's one thing left undone. There was like an extra area that needed the tape that kind of got left off the original plan. Um, so we want them to come back for that. But everything else got done and it got done very well.
Oh, that's great. Okay. There's a, there's a payment for the library's disc repair machine. What is that?
It's a, a machine that you can use to clean CDs and DVDs. They get kind of junked up. It even kind of repairs scratches. If we use it, it works great and it um, extends the life of those media.
That would have been great back in two thousand and two.
I took a DVD out last weekend.
It's for you.
Did the kids look at you funny?
Um, it was, well, I, I did it because we couldn't find it streaming anywhere. So we all watched Back to the Future.
On a DVD.
On a DVD.
Love it.
Talking about going back in time.
Yeah, I know, absolutely.
Uh, on page thirteen, we paid Farmington Library for a couple of things. Why is that?
That's because they're the fiduciary for MetroNet, which is that affiliation of libraries. And we have a lot of purchases that we um, do through that group.
Okay. What's the difference between advanced checks and regular checks?
Advanced checks are checks that um, have to get paid before this meeting happens, essentially. So all the regular checks we hold and are reviewed by you and as part where you vote to approve the items on the consent agenda, you're uh, allowing the release of those expenditures. But there are some like utilities. It, every, it would have to be on a net forty-five day pay scale in order to wait for this meeting to happen. Utilities don't work with that and other companies don't work with that. So we have those advanced checks that we do before the board meeting happens, so we can get those out into the world.
So the, the, the first set are paid and the second set are yet to be paid?
You got it.
Remind me, Amazon Capital Services, what's that?
Uh, it's just Amazon.
Just Amazon?
Yeah.
Not just.
That's right. Maybe that's, these are, we, we spend about the same amount of money. The only other point I would make is I look, I did go through each of these budget line items and it looks like we're in great shape.
We're in good shape, yeah.
That's all.
Great, sure.
All right.
And while we, but while we have that open, does anybody else have anything else that they wanted to discuss? From seven A, which had been removed? Okay, well then, can we have a motion to approve the items removed from the consent agenda?
Move it.
And a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Well, now it's time for other. And uh, does anybody have any other?
Are we going to go through the strategic plan memo? Because if not, I have a comment, which is simply fourteen firms attended the walkthrough. I mean, that's impressive.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that was great.
Yeah, we had a lot of interest in that video surveillance, but yeah.
Yeah, I bet.
That was the spaces.
Spaces, okay, oh, that's right, yeah.
I think posting to BidNet has made a big difference.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Because previously, we would just identify-
Right.
Firms, either they had reached out to us or we had heard of them and we would email or even snail mail the RFP to them. And now putting it on BidNet for all these different companies to see has really generated a lot of interest.
Can you sell cars on BidNet?
Yeah.
Maybe, you can try.
But I have to also assume, as we witnessed at MLA and I, I think I've been to like four other conferences in the last two months. And I can't believe the amount of furniture, architectural um, rent. It's just incredible that are coming to library conferences and are specializing in library work.
Good for them.
So I thi- I think it's a testament to villages being passed.
Yeah.
Positive money.
Investment in libraries.
Investments um, from the respective communities. I, I think it's a good thing. It does bring competition, but uh, how many were MLA? Probably four?
Yeah.
At least four.
And didn't one of the, one of the bids or people came from your contact that you had been to?
Two, I think two were there that, that either Joy or I had spoken with at.
At MLA. That's good.
That's great.
Is there any other over?
Um, they, the Cedar Fasha were, were just holding it, right?
Yeah, so what I asked Hugo to do was have Duross um, prioritize the worst spots uh, to about twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the threshold before I have to come and ask you all. So I think it was about twenty thousand dollars. And so they just replaced the, the major spots. And yeah, I'm just going to hold that for- Hugo was really driving that urge for the Hardy Board. Um, so I, I'm just going to sit with it for-
Okay.
A minute.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, well, the next time that we will meet is go, uh, will be um, Joan's birthday.
Candles will not be covered.
December seventeenth and um, our regular board meeting will begin at seven, but we will try to gather before that to be sworn in.
Do the swear in, yes.
Yes.
So yeah, I'll confirm that and send out a reminder. Um, but plan on six thirty. And we'll have break the cake.
Uh, we're having our break.
We're having to.
Can we, can we replace the picture? Yeah, we can.
Yes, everyone has to be here.
Is everyone going to be here?
Well, there's a chance I won't because of my operations.
Oh, right, and I can't take a picture.
Yeah, so I will, I will, I will do my best to-
We can polish it.
No, 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 no.
I can't.
That is not among my skill sets.
When is your?
December second.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I should, I, I, in my mind, it'll be the next day.
Oh, you'll be at your wedding.
That's right, I'll be, I can't do the cartwheel. That's right, I'll be, I can't do the cartwheel, you're going to, Jonah said she's going to do a cartwheel on her birthday, but I'm ready.
Well, no, you said, if you feel like you're ten, and I said, well, if I felt like I was ten, I would do a cartwheel.
Oh, that's true, that's true. I said, yes, it's how you feel more than form than your age.
Yeah, right.
Right, but I'll do my best.
Well, maybe, maybe someone could pick you up.
Yeah.
Yes, that's true.
Bring you.
That's true, so.
Absolutely. We will discuss that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
At that meeting, in addition to celebrating Joan's birthday, we will be discussing PA one fifty-two and we will talk about the video camera RFP award as well as election of officers. We'll have new officers to elect. Well, thank you very much for a lovely evening and a lovely meeting, we are now adjourned.
And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yes.